Good morning and welcome. It's so good to see everyone here in the hearing room. Thank you to those of you who are joining us online. We will go ahead and begin our Board of County Commissioners meeting for February 25th. We'll call this meeting to order. I'm Jefferson County Commissioner Leslie Dahlkemper, here with Commissioners Zenzinger and Kerr. Our clerk this morning is Ms. Zamora, and our host is Mr. Yergert, who will handle all requests for public comment online. There are several ways to join our hybrid meeting, all of which are listed on our website at jeffco.us. Hybrid meetings are held in person and virtually. You're always welcome to reach out to the board on the county's website at jeffco.us or by email at commish@jeffco.us. We request that everyone please silence their phones. I'm going to do the same, and ask that you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Next on our agenda is public comment. And just to explain public comment this morning, public comment is specifically for items that are not on today's agenda. So we have two people who've signed up for public comment. Again, if this is regarding an issue on today's agenda, whether it's consent, whether it's an issue like our 15-year housing plan that we'll be hearing from our team on and from members of the community. Again, just a reminder, this section is only for items not on the agenda. We will also be pulling off, I wanted to just give a heads up, item 9.1. We have some individuals online who would like to speak to that item. That item was originally on consent agenda. Just wanted to give folks a heads up who may be tuning in virtually on that item. And then, of course, after that, we will hear from those of you who may be here this morning to provide public comment on the 15-year housing plan. Just a little bit of an update of how the morning will proceed. So during our, during public comment, we have two rounds. We will take up to 15 minutes at the beginning of our meeting for public comment, and then we take additional public comment at the end of the meeting if anyone would like to address the board. We'll begin with those who have signed up. I'll check to see if there's anyone else virtually or in the room who'd like to provide public comment. Again, for those of you who are joining us virtually, a reminder to please log into our meeting using your computer. Send a note in the chat to our host with your full name, address, and the topic. And when it's your turn to speak, the host will give you permission to unmute. I have two people signed up to speak in the hearing room, and first we'll hear from Greg Ross. Mr. Ross, are you with us?
Yes, K-O-S-S, Cos, but-
Oh, Cos, okay. Mr. Cos, thank you so much. If you'd share with us your address, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Greg Cos, and I live at 15150 West 32nd Avenue, across the street from Rolling Hills Country Club in the Applewood neighborhood. Imagine waking up in your yard, to your yard underwater, your history bulldozed, and a 50,000-volt transformer dumped where your rights used to be, all because someone else got a free pass while you got ignored. That's been my reality for the last five years. Back in 2019, my irrigation ditch providing water that has been part of this community since the 1860s was destroyed for the Cottage Desert, Rolling Hills subdivision. The property owner, developer, and even Jeffco knew it was there. I got no warning, no say. They buried it, slapped a broken pipe in its place, and let Excel and the HOA pile on concrete, fences, and that transformer. I fought back. Letters, pleas, they steamrolled ahead. Yet you bent over backwards for Coors, locking in easements long before this subdivision got your nod. Why did you leave me stuck in this mess? That pipe they gave me, a joke. It floods my yard. It flows uphill. The new HOA locked me out, built over it, and now their homeowners are threatening and harassing me. I fixed our culvert in 2023 to stop the flooding on our property. You hit me with a violation notice and threats. But when I begged for help years ago, you called it a private matter and bailed. Where's that excuse when Coors builds unimpeded roads to Isabel Street, steps from my door? I'm here for action, not excuses. You're bound to uphold the law, water rights, county codes, equal treatment. By April 1st, when the 2025 irrigation season starts, I need that transformer gone, a working pipe, a functional headgate, and an easement, just like the one Coors got. I fought this alone, spending thousands. Proof is at fixrditch.org with videos and my story. Commissioners, this is your jurisdiction, your duty. Fix our ditch, and you'll uphold the law, not just for multi-billion-dollar giants like Coors handed easements and unpermitted roads, but for every Jefferson County property owner demanding equal justice. Make it right for me and for all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Cos, thanks so much for taking the time to be here this morning. And we'll follow up with our county manager, and our Planning and Zoning Director is also here as well. Thank you. Next, we have Lynn Clemmons. Ms. Clemmons, would you come forward?
Morning, Commissioners. Here I am again. I've discovered a failure-
Ms. Clemmons-
Oh, I'm sorry, Lynn Clemmons, 59, 6202 Kilmer Loop in Unit 102 in Arvada.
Thank you.
And I'm here to talk about the canal realignment property at 5950 McIntyre. I have discovered a failure to communicate between Arvada, the City of Arvada, and the county. There are records about the county, about the canal realignment that were submitted to the city, and I found them in an email. And unfortunately, the email was from the developer and had a little confidential statement at the bottom. So this is, there were two, there are two documents. One is the GESC, which is currently on file at the county. And I have, you know, I acknowledge that. The second document given to Arvada was called the 2022-1208 FHL Canal CDs PDF. All I'm asking is that I ask the city for a copy of this document. Well, because of the confidential statement in the email that went to the city, they were not able to give me this even in a FOIA request. So I went, and they said, "Go to the county." Well, they won't share the document with the county, and I'm not sure the county is asking the city for the document to make sure it is the same document that was submitted to the county. This is a failure to communicate, and my property is in the middle of this, and I'm not happy about it. Now, I sent a note yesterday to the City of Arvada Mayor and my city councilperson, and I told them I would be here today to try to rectify this. These documents should all be public record. You know what? The city didn't have to ask for a permit on this little piece of property where the canal is going through. And I'm hoping that that is not the reason that I can't see this document. These documents should be public. We should be able to look at these documents, no matter what. The county should want to know what was submitted to the city, and the city should freely share this. We need to communicate. These documents need to be available for us to look at. My property is within 20 feet of the canal as it is going to flow downstream from the huge development at 5950 McIntyre. This does not make me happy. I am caught in the middle, and I would like to have this resolved. The other thing we could do is go to the developer and ask what was submitted to the county, to the city, and then make that public on the county documents. That's all I'm asking. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Clemmons, for being here. Next, let me ask, is there anyone else in the room who would like to provide public comment on an issue that is not currently on the agenda? All right, and then we'll also check to see, do we have anyone joining us virtually who'd like to comment?
Yes, Carolyn Farbman.
Terrific. Good morning, Ms. Farbman. Please go ahead with your comment, and if you would share your address with us.
I live in Westminster, Colorado. I want to bring attention to an important shift in the RMMA Part 150 process that deserves scrutiny. RMMA and the Part 150 consultant emphasize the creation of an advisory committee, one that was supposed to allow impacted community members to actively collaborate on noise data input. However, based on today's staff briefing agenda, it appears that instead of forming this advisory committee as promised, they now plan to replace it with three separate focus groups, one for airport users, one for local planners, and one for community members. This means that instead of a dedicated seat at the table, our single community representative will now be absorbed into a much larger focus group, severely diluting the ability of impacted residents to help shape this process. RMMA and Jefferson County committed to a Part 150 study and ran a competitive process requiring the establishment of an inclusive advisory committee, not a set of focus groups with no real authority. The community deserves a real voice. I urge this commission to hold RMMA accountable and ensure that impacted residents have direct input in the advisory committee, as was originally promised. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farbman. Anyone else online who'd like to address the board at this time?
No one else.
Great, thank you so much. Next, we have the approval of the minutes dated February 11th, 2025. May I have a motion to approve?
I move for the approval of the minutes for February 11th, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Zamora, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahlkemper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Next, we have 10 items on the consent agenda. These are items 6.1 through 6.10. Commissioners, would either of you like to take an item off the consent agenda?
No, thank you.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion to approve items 6.1 through 6.10?
I move for the approval of consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.10.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Zamora, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahlkemper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Next is our regular agenda. We have no agenda items on our regular agenda this morning. Next is the hearing consent portion of our meeting. We have two items on the consent agenda. And I will first ask Ms. Zamora, well, let's do this. Let's pull off item 9.1. We have folks, I understand, joining us online who'd like to speak on 9.1. But let me then check to see, board members, if you'd like to pull off 9.2 as well, or if anyone, if you would like to do that. Would you like to pull off 9.2? Okay. Commissioner Kerr?
Nope, all good.
Okay. And is there anyone in the audience who would like to pull item 9.2 off of the consent agenda? And then we check to see if there's anyone online? Mr. Yergert, is there anyone joining us virtually who'd like to speak to 9.2 specifically to pull it off?
No one online.
Okay, great. Why don't we focus on 9.2 first, and I will ask for a motion to approve item 9.2? Oh, I'm sorry, we have to read it into the record. Yep, thank you. I apologize. If we could please read that into the record, and then we'll go back to 9.1. Thanks.
9.2, Resolution CC 25-051, Case Number 24-125226, RZ rezoning. Case Name: 16670 County Road 126 Official Development Plan. Owner Applicant: Carol Williams. Location: 16670 County Road 126 Pine. Approximate Area: 0.23 acres. Purpose: To rezone the Commercial 1 to Plan Development PD to allow existing residential use. Case Manager: Ally McGahey.
Great, thank you very much. And with that, I will now ask for a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 9.2.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Zamora, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr? Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahlkemper?
Yes, and item 9.2 is approved. Next, we'll go to item 9.1, and we will begin first with a presentation, or a brief presentation from our staff. Please go ahead and introduce yourself, and then we will turn to public testimony on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. If I could ask the host to promote Heather Guthellis on that. She's my colleague. So if we could be promoted to a panelist so that I can share. Sorry.
While we're waiting to get our technology up and running, let's, why don't we read 9.1 into the record? Now that the caffeine has kicked in a little bit. Thank you.
9.1, Resolution CC 25-050, Case Number 21-120841, RZ rezoning. Case Name: South Golden Road Mixed Use Development Official Development Plan. Owner Applicant: Revva Golden LLC, a Colorado limited liability company. Location: 16999, 16925, 16905, 16985, and 16725, South Golden Road, Golden. Approximate Area: 14.13 acres. Original Approval on January 24th, 2023. The Board of County Commissioners approved the rezoning from Residential 2, R2, and Commercial 2, C2, to Plan Development PD to allow for mixed-use development to include commercial and a maximum of 353 residential units. Purpose: Post-hearing review for nonsubstantial change to establish lot size and setbacks for townhomes in Planning Area 1. Clarify that dissimilar-use landscape buffer between planning areas is not required to not require retaining walls, to be included in the height of fences to allow parking for both planning areas to be met within the overall boundary of the official development plan and to correct the exterior boundary of the official development plan. Case Manager: Nick Nelson.
Great, thank you so much. Mr. Nelson, please go ahead with your brief presentation.
Thank you very much again. Yes, my name is Nick Nelson, and this is the South Golden Road Mixed Use ODP. As we just read into the record, this is a nonsubstantial post-hearing review. The applicants would like to establish minimum lot size and setbacks for Planning Area 1, not require a dissimilar-use landscape screen between the two different planning areas, allow fences on top of retaining walls to not be included in the overall height of the fence, allow parking to be utilized in both planning areas for the overall development and to correct a survey error in the legal description. Again, this case was originally heard by the Board of County Commissioners on January 4th of 2023, and that original approval was for up to 353 dwelling units with mixed-use development along South Golden Road with ground floor commercial. With this nonsubstantial change, none of the dwelling unit count isn't changing. The allowance for commercial is staying exactly the same. It's really just those few items that are being requested to be updated. So again, the property is located on the north side of South Golden Road, just to the west of Quaker Street, near the King Supers project in the City of Golden. Again, the original zoning was Residential 2 with a small pocket of Commercial 2. So this is the graphic from the original approval. This Planning Area 1, the planning areas themselves are not changing. So Planning Area 1 would allow for the townhome what was previously going to be multifamily. So the, in order to potentially build this out as a for-sell platted project, they need to establish a minimum lot size and with those setbacks. So that's what we're here to do, is to establish that. So that's what we have here. From the exterior, those buildings would be a five-foot setback. Adjacent to a street would be a three-foot. Those interior walls of the townhome units, zero foot, obviously, and then a 1,000-square-foot minimum lot size. No more than eight dwelling, or eight units in a row could be in one building. The next thing, the zoning resolution would normally require a dissimilar landscape screen between a single-family attached product and a mixed-use or commercial product. Because this is all being developed as one cohesive development, staff doesn't find a need for that, so we are supportive of this request to not require that internal dissimilar landscape screen. The zoning resolution does also require that a retaining wall be included in the height of a fence. As they have gone through the design of this project, they have some retaining walls that are pretty near to some of the residential units. So as a safety measure, they would like to have a safety rail or a fence on top of that retaining wall, which would otherwise exceed the height allowed of a fence and retaining wall combined. So this is just allowing them to have that safety measure going forward. Again, because this is all one overall cohesive development, staff thinks it makes sense to have parking. Normally, we would say parking in Planning Area 1 is for Planning Area 1, but this is just one overall development. So we're okay with all of the parking being accounted for in both planning areas. And then finally, while they were doing the survey work for their site development plan, they did discover that there was just a discrepancy in one of the dimensions on their legal description. So this will just correct that legal description. That is the substantive changes that are being proposed. I do have the rest of the presentation from the previous hearing if I need to go through it, but I think this might be a good stopping point.
I think that's perfect. Thank you so much. Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time?
I do not have any questions at this time.
Okay, great. And do we have anyone from the team working on this development here? Would you like to provide some brief comments before we move to testimony online? Welcome. Thanks. Come on forward. And we will have to swear you in. We'll get your name and address.
Do you swear or affirm that your testimony, excuse me, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your, please state and spell your name and address for the record.
Hi, Ethan Watel, W-A-T-E-L, with Baseline Engineering Corporation, 112 North Ruby Drive, Suite 210, Golden 80403. Thanks, Nick, and thank you, Commissioners. Nick did a great job going over the changes that are part of this minor revision request. I'm happy to answer any questions, seeing what the public comment comes in. I don't think I need to add anything to Nick. Just one thing on that legal description. The northern part of this property is a half of an old vacated railroad right away, the Denver and Interurban Railroad that went from Denver to Golden. So as we went out there and did some more surveying, we just noticed a few pins were maybe not where we thought they were. And actually, it made our property get a little smaller, not larger. So that little piece that is a little wedge out of the top there grew by about nine feet into our property, believe it or not. So this just clarifies that and makes sure we know where everything is on that piece. Happy to answer any questions should they come up.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Watel. I'll just check with board members to see if either of you have any questions at this time. Okay? And then we may bring you back based on what we hear from public testimony on this item. Thank you so much for your comments. We appreciate it. Next, we'll go to public testimony on this issue. Do we have members of the community who are here in person who'd like to testify on item 9.1? We had, we had five people who had signed up to provide public testimony. So let's move to folks online. Mr. Yergert, do you have anyone joining us online? Ms. DeGroot, Ms. Lombert, Mr. Sackley, Ms. Sloick, and Mr. Webb?
No one online.
Great, thank you very much. All right, well, Commissioners, if you don't have any further questions at this point, we don't have any testimony in the hearing room or online. I will just ask one more time if you have any questions, and if not, we'll move to a motion. Okay? All right.
Questions?
Thank you, and thank you both for being here. We appreciate it. Thank you for joining us. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 9.1?
I move for the approval of Hearing Consent Agenda Item 9.1.
Second.
Ms. Zamora, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahlkemper?
Yes, and Agenda Item 9.1 is approved. Thanks again. Appreciate your being here. Next, we'll move to the hearing regular portion of our meeting. We have two items on our hearing regular agenda. Ms. Zamora, would you please read Hearing Agenda Item 10.1 into the record?
10.1, Resolution CC 25-052, Policy Part 6, Chapter 2, Section 3, Regarding the Ordinance Regulating the Open Carry of Firearms. Public Hearing, County Manager's Office.
Thank you. Please go ahead, Ms. Newman.
Good morning. Kate Newman, Deputy County Manager. This is for consideration of amendments to the Open Carry Ordinance. The existing ordinance has been in place since 2013. It prohibits the open carrying of firearms in certain buildings. Several county buildings have been designated and are signed to prohibit open carry in accordance with state statute. In 2024, state law changed the penalty and classification of a violation of the Open Carries Law. Accordingly, the proposed amendments increased the penalty for open carrying in these designated buildings, making open carrying in designated buildings a more serious offense. Also in 2024, the governor signed Senate Bill 24131, which prohibits carrying concealed firearms in sensitive places. Additional state legislation also prohibits carrying a firearm at polling locations or drop boxes. To acknowledge these new laws, the proposed changes in our existing ordinance add the reference to these two statutes. The first reading for these amendments was held on January 28th, 2025, and the proposed amendments were also published in full on February 6, 2025. If approved today, the ordinance would be republished by title only, and then would go into effect 30 days after publication. So in summary, staff is requesting that we change the ordinance to reflect these changes in state statutes.
Great, thank you. It's pretty straightforward. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions at this time?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. I'm going to double-check. I don't believe we have anyone here to testify on this issue, but I will go ahead and ask if there's anyone in person or online?
No one online.
Great, thank you very much. All right. May I have a motion then to approve item 10.1?
I move for the approval of Hearing Regular Agenda Item 10.1.
Second.
Ms. Zamora, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahlkemper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Ms. Zamora, thanks again, Ms. Newman, for being here. We appreciate your work on this policy change. Ms. Zamora, would you please read Hearing Regular Agenda Item 10.2 into the record?
10.2, Resolution CC 25-053, Jefferson County 15-Year Housing Strategic Plan, Housing Continuum Task Force.
Great, thank you so much. I see a number of folks coming forward. Welcome. Please feel free to grab a seat or bring a seat over. Why don't we first introduce the team who's joining us today? David, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. My name is David Duncan. I'm the co-chair of the Housing Continuum Task Force, also the vice chair of the Planning Commission. It's my pleasure to, after a long duration of a lot of hard work by a lot of people putting this together, pleased to present to you, and actually, we have Molly from, Molly Fitzpatrick from Root Policy, who's done the major lift of the Housing Needs Assessments and the Toolbox, the toolkit that is before you today, to accept as a 15-year housing plan. It is designed to address the needs across the full spectrum of housing, from homelessness to market rate ownership to create vibrant communities where housing is accessible to all. Current and future housing needs were analyzed extensively in Jefferson County Housing Needs Assessment, which is an appended to the report. The strategies prioritized in this plan reflect a community-driven process that adapts national best practices in housing policy to unique local context of Jefferson County and its communities. The strategic plan draws strongly on the expertise of members of the Jefferson County Housing Continuum Task Force, current and ongoing planning efforts in local Jeffco communities, and feedback gathered from residents and stakeholders during the community engagement process. Just want to take a moment to thank Kat Douglas and Emily Sanders.
I'm going to ask if you would speak directly into the mic. We have some folks who are having trouble hearing in the back, and I'm just going to take this opportunity to also introduce, from our Planning and Zoning Team, Heather Guthellis, who is with us as well. Welcome, Heather. Welcome, Molly. Welcome, Molly. And also want to acknowledge community members who are in the room, who are joining to speak to this issue. Thank you for being here. Please continue.
Okay, sure. Now I can experience this, right? Yeah, yeah, have to get closer, right? I'm usually sitting up there. Just want to take a moment to recognize many of the people that are instrumental in putting this plan together, from the county, Kat Douglas and Emily Sanders, for being our liaisons to the county and keeping us on track. My co-chairs, Jansen Tedmore and Cassie Ratcliffe, that could not be here today. Definitely Molly, SE, Root Policy, SE2, doing all of the community engagement, all of the heavy lifting on, and this is out of all the local housing plans that have been put together that I have seen, this is definitely the most comprehensive plan of data crunching and community involvement and tools that come out that other end. Definitely want to thank all the Housing Task Force members. This was a community effort. They lent lots of time and lots of expertise to this process. I know Mindy's in the audience, many more, and I think maybe some other members of our task force are here as well. And just thank everybody that was involved in putting this together. And for the presentation of the plan, I'm going to turn it over to, oh, Heather Guthrillis, obviously, and Cassidy Clements also lent a lot of expertise from the Planning Department. So I'm going to turn it over to Molly to present the plan to you.
Wonderful. Thanks. Great to see you. Thanks for being here and being a part of this. And Molly, you are welcome if you are more comfortable there. It sounds like, looks like Heather may be helping with the presentation, so wherever you are most comfortable, you are welcome.
I'm comfortable in either of the places, but I'm already standing, so I guess we'll go with it.
Sounds great.
But good morning, Commissioners. Very glad to be here and everyone who's online as well. Thanks so much, David, for the introduction, and you basically covered my first slide, so we'll just jump right into it. As David mentioned, we are just giving a really high-level overview today of the housing strategic plan that covers kind of a 15-year looking-forward period. It is designed to cover that entire spectrum of housing, from homelessness all the way up through market rate homeownership, and it was really a community-driven process led by the Housing Continuum Task Force. Also, lots of needs assessment and data analysis, community engagement, and then the strategies that we'll, we'll give you an overview of are really taking kind of national best practices, but then adapting them and identifying what would work here based on the local context, what works in Jefferson County, and really adapting that into the local context. There's a lot in the document, of course, online. We're not going to go through all of it, so today's just kind of a high level. But for those that are kind of want to dig into the data, that's in there. Want to dig into the community engagement, that's in there as well. As a high-level overview of those needs that we identified, this is all part of that needs assessment. We did a lot of work to quantify housing needs kind of across that whole continuum of housing to identify what are the current needs? Where is the market not working right now? That's kind of the immediate needs that you can see there. And then also, what do our needs look like going forward as a county? And this is looking at the entire county, including incorporated areas and unincorporated areas. So those needs were identified by price point in terms of affordability level, but also by housing type going forward. Go ahead and jump to the next slide. As we think about that entire continuum and what needs there are across that, we also look at different strategies, of course, across that. So as we think about the most affordable side, there's certainly public assistance that's needed at that end of the housing spectrum. And as we move up toward market rate homeownership, that's really where we can leverage the market to deliver those units. But as a, as a county and as cities within the county, really understanding what tools do we have to help unlock that supply and move it forward? So as we think about kind of the overall approach here, one that helps unlock supply, but also creates funding and leverages key partnerships is really critical to the success of the overall plan. The Housing Continuum Task Force did identify some guiding principles as we think about implementation. So before we jump into the actual recommendations and strategies, looking at these guiding principles, which are at the top of the screen, are really designed to help make sure the implementation of this tool, of all the tools in the plan is effective and helps really target the intent and the needs that were identified. And those principles are to prioritize identified housing and community needs, considering both the urgency of that need as well as the relative size of the need. To balance high-urgency actions with long-term sustainable solutions. To focus funds where the market does not address or meet needs. And to take advantage of opportunities that leverage and maximize the impact of existing funds and resources. In addition to those guiding principles to help us think about implementation, the task force also identified a couple of preservation and housing production goals that will help kind of measure some of the success. This is not the only benchmark to measure success of the plan, and there are certainly some strategies that don't speak specifically to production and preservation, but we did want to at least call out these goals as part of that effort as well. And the first is to increase the supply of affordable housing by 3% per year. This is part of the county's commitment to Proposition 123. The second is to preserve affordability of all, meaning 100% of the existing income-restricted units that are in Jeffco, so making sure that we're recapturing expiring affordability contracts so that those don't convert into market rate. And the third, production and preservation goal is to encourage sufficient housing production to keep pace with overall market demand, and thinking about that as measured by both demographic and economic growth. That is also reflected in the projections that we looked at on those 15-year needs, those balanced economic and demographic growth as well. And that those, encouraging that sufficient production is also aligned with income distribution of the community, as well as accessibility needs and diverse housing types. So make sure we're looking at housing types for all the different types of community members, including folks that are just starting their careers, folks that are in sort of the families, seen half-life and have kids, as well as folks that are aging and may have unique housing needs. So with that, we'll jump into a quick overview of the actual recommended strategies. There are six strategy areas you can see here: regional and jurisdictional collaboration, dedicated housing funds and assets, housing production and affordability tools, housing property and preservation, homeless response and prevention, and program and service delivery. Those are the big, six big buckets. And again, I'm going to give like just a really quick overview of each of those, but within the actual strategic plan, there are action items within each of these, next steps for each action item, there's timelines, there's identified partnership options for implementation and execution, and then there's also resource descriptions as well. So if those, they want to dig into kind of the details of kind of the actual action plan and steps forward, that's all contained in the plan. But I'll spare you all of that detail today. I'll just jump through and we'll, we'll work through quickly on these strategies. So the first strategy is that collaboration strategy. It's to actively engage in regional and jurisdictional collaboration to achieve housing goals. That includes working with other efforts like the Jeffco Housing Blueprint, supporting jurisdictional efforts around Prop 123, supporting Heading Home, which is already a network of folks that are providing services to people experiencing homelessness. It also includes lobbying for best practice changes, both at the state and federal levels, and continuing to cultivate public-private partnerships. The second strategy is to leverage financial assets and identifying a funding source to support housing production, preservation, and programs. So not surprisingly, the first one in this is to create a dedicated, sustainable revenue source. There's lots of options for, for doing that, so there's a handful of ways to explore what that might look like. In addition to actually creating funding, it's also looking at assets the county might already have access to, so allocating underutilized or publicly-owned land for housing, affordable and workforce housing specifically, continuing that existing program funding, some of which is designated by both federal and state funds, and then continuing to monitor potential new sources of funding. Strategy three is regulatory reforms to unlock supply, improve housing affordability and diversity, and incentivize affordable projects. This strategy umbrella includes land use and zoning modifications. It includes incentives for the production of affordable income-restricted housing, and it also includes collaborative efforts, acknowledging that the county has control over kind of regulatory landscape and unincorporated, but also working with your incorporated communities to look at best practices and advocating for those reforms across the entire county, not just in unincorporated. Strategy four is to invest in the preservation of housing and properties that serve low and moderate-income households. That includes acquisition and rehab of expiring affordability contracts. That directly ties to that goal we talked about before, about preserving 100% of existing affordable. It also includes looking at opportunities to preserve naturally occurring affordable housing, so the housing that just is, doesn't have an income restriction but is affordable to the folks that are living in it, and also to improve mobile home policies and anti-displacement protections. Strategy five is to implement robust and equitable homeless response and prevention systems. This is really an important and unique aspect of this housing strategy, that it does include that full spectrum, including folks that are experiencing homelessness and looking at targeted strategies for that segment of the housing continuum. And so this really helps tie in with that, including building on heading home priorities and supporting navigation services, continuing to apply and advocate for homeless prevention dollars, providing capital and operational funding for navigation centers and shelters, which are critically needed, and then also to evaluate housing and service investments through the lens of homeless prevention and sprawl. So looking for ways to tie all of these different components of the spectrum together. And then finally, strategy six is to improve program and service delivery for vulnerable households and residents with special needs. So this is really looking at how do we stabilize people, not just build housing? And so that includes the actions of improving programs and service capacity through funding and staff support, so where can we make programs bigger and better? And then also improving community access and awareness of available programs and services? How can we most efficiently meet the needs that people have and move them into programs where those are applicable? So with that, I'm actually going to, that's, that's kind of the wrap-up on the full housing strategy. I'm also going to invite Heather to come speak a little bit about how this process is coordinating with Together Jeffco, obviously huge effort as well, and we want to make sure that we're staying very closely aligned and keeping those tied together. So I'll hand off to Heather.
Yeah, thanks, Molly. And I just want to again acknowledge all the work done by Root Policy and by our Community Development Division, because they really did put a lot of effort into this, and it really is an incredible plan that has come together. And it's been great working with them on our efforts to coordinate the housing plan with the Together Jeffco process. With Together Jeffco, we started out and we had four plans and regulations to update. We've completed a couple of those, but we do want to highlight with this presentation specifically how we've been coordinating the comprehensive plan and the 15-year housing strategic plan, along with the transportation mobility plan in the Unified Land Use Code. The comprehensive plan is the big vision guiding document, and really in there, we've looked at how those vision goals and policies and implementation measures can be coordinated together. So in this slide, you can kind of see how the 15-year housing plan in that structure relates to the comprehensive plan, and I apologize, the green looked much greener on the screen when we initially put it together. It stood out. But in the areas that you can't see very well, it says Chapter 3 Housing and Chapter 8 Adaptable Implementation. The, those two sections specifically, we made sure that the housing goals and policies really tied in with the housing strategic plan, and the adaptable implementation has several strategies, a section dedicated to housing and things that we can do in the future that, that again tie in. We also looked at the transportation mobility plan, and the transportation mobility plan has strategies related to equity, and they talk about providing multimodal opportunities for affordable housing specifically. And so it's really good to see how even that can be tied in because we're doing all of these together. We are still really in the research and drafting phase for the ULOC, or what I'll probably call the regulations. However, we do have, one of our adaptive implementation policies in the comp plan is to ensure that our regulations really reflect those housing strategic plan strategies. And in the final slide, I just wanted to show a little bit of that relationship specifically between the goals of the housing plan and the goals of the housing chapter in the comprehensive plan. You can see that both of them talk about preserving the affordability of housing, developing affordable housing, looking at, the comp plan specifically talks about diverse housing opportunities and ensuring housing development is sustainable and resilient, which is good for the future, for people needing housing. And I did want to note that this is just almost like a visual representation of the crosswalk that is in your packet, the housing crosswalk. It really goes into a lot more detail of all of the different strategies in the housing plan and relates them to goals and policies and implementation items in the comprehensive plan. And so we didn't want to fill the screen with that because that might be a little bit too much, but that's in your packet for your information. Wanted to let you know that is definitely a working document, and it currently compares the housing plan, the comprehensive plan, the Unified Land Use Code. We're adding things regarding the transportation mobility plan. But in the future, we also hope that we'll be able to coordinate with other departments and align their plans and strategies to encourage affordable housing to the extent possible in the county. So not just have it be about Together Jeffco and planning and zoning, but have it look countywide as well. That concludes our presentation, and I'm sure we'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much for that detailed presentation. Really appreciate it. And the Board of County Commissioners also had the opportunity to meet with you during the briefing to do a deeper dive on the housing study as well and our next steps. I'm going to just jump, jump in, start us off with two quick comments for, especially for our audience and for our community members, and then one quick follow-up question based on an email that the Board of County Commissioners received regarding mobile homes. Wanted to touch on that briefly. One, really want to underscore how critical we think it is that the crosswalk is done with this plan and Together Jeffco, and appreciate the work that Planning and Zoning and the entire team, Kat Douglas and others, are doing on that front. And also, for those of you who are tuning in virtually here in person, we encourage you to take a look at the comprehensive master plan draft. Comments are due back in just a few days on, I think it's February 27, if I'm not mistaken, and you can go to TogetherJeffco.com, and you can click on the comprehensive master plan, and then you can type in your comments and reactions right in the document. Also, you had mentioned the housing blueprint, and I wanted to share with everything, everyone, that the board has approved the housing blueprint, and we are quite proactively promoting it statewide, locally, regionally, and more, and we had an opportunity to promote it at the Colorado Counties Inc. Winter Conference, which was great. One question that I did have for you involves a comment that we had received, a comment of concern regarding manufactured homes, which are included in several of the strategies and action items in the 15-year plan, but there's concern that, and I want to check the accuracy with you and just get your thoughts on this, that it is absent from the draft comprehensive plan. Also, some concerns about the revised land use map on the Together Jeffco website regarding the protective zoning for all mobile home parks in unincorporated Jeffco, and concern that that either is being removed or has been removed. Is that something that you could address and talk with us further about?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about, about that comment. So as far as the goals and policies, I do, I do want to say that those do not specifically talk about mobile homes in the goals and policies because they are much broader. They, they also don't talk about some other things that are in the strategic plan, like duplexes and triplexes. It's much more general, talking about a diversity of housing types, and also making sure that we support existing housing stock. The place where mobile homes is addressed in the comprehensive plan is in the Adaptable Implementation Chapter. There are several key actions under the Affordable Housing Initiative, and one of those is to collaborate with nonprofit partner organizations to evaluate mobile home park best practices and implement best practices into the Unified Land Use Code. And so that's where we wanted to highlight mobile homes as an action item for future regulation updates. So as far as the land use map, that is one thing where I think we need to look at that a little bit more. We do, the land use map is a recommendation for the future, so it's not changing the protective zoning that's already in place. We do have mobile home park zoning, and that is already established on many of the mobile home parks. Most of them, I think there might be one that doesn't have that mobile home park zoning that, that is not, so it's zoned something different and may not have those protections. I know that I have also heard that the land use recommendation map should have more information. We do have references to mobile home parks as one of, of one of the potential uses, but we did look more broadly at bigger areas, and so we may want to talk with the folks that made the comment to see if there is something different that we need to do to highlight those mobile home park areas more.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrillis. I appreciate that very much, and I think what we can do is, is forward and share, and you may already have that email for a response, and I also appreciate your dedication to working with residents as well to allay any concerns and also factor in those best practices moving forward. Just had one more quick follow-up question, because when we met during the briefing, you had, we asked you, what, what do you think, just stepping back, are the big headlines coming out of this study in terms of what we need to know regarding challenges? You talked about one this morning, which is sustainable sources of funding. Question for you, as we look at other communities and how they've addressed that challenge, what are you seeing that could potentially be promising for Jefferson County?
Great. Thank you so much for that question. Yes, funding is certainly a challenge. It's a challenge for all communities. What we typically see as kind of a path to success is, in many communities, really starting with a general fund dedication to say, look, we are prioritizing this as part of a budget and saying, we're going to allocate some of the general funds that we have discretion over into either an Affordable Housing Trust Fund or some type of housing designation. That tends to be the best way to start because it starts kind of setting a precedent for that flow. We also see a lot of success in communities really taking a little bit of time to explore what's going to work best in their community. It really, as you might expect, differs by community, right? And so in our mountain communities in Colorado, we see a lot of success with sales tax options or vacation or vacation-related types of either taxes or fees because they are really drawing from a pool of tourism-based economy. Jeffco has that to some extent, not to the same extent that, for example, Summit County does. But looking at some of those, you know, the broad-based tax options, including kind of property or sales tax, obviously go to a vote of the people. They can be a real challenge to do well, but they also are the broadest base to really start to set it as a clear priority for communities. So I think that's kind of the spectrum of ideal, is start with some general fund, look at ways to kind of generate that based on a broad-based tax if and when possible.
Great. Thank you so much. Commissioners, what comments or questions do you have at this time? Commissioner Kerr?
I don't have any questions or comments really at this time. I'm going to reserve a little bit of time at the end to make one or two comments. One of the things, I'm just overwhelmed by the number of people, organizations, the community outpouring on getting this together and done. And I'm going to be listening a little bit to hear the county's role versus municipalities. And I shouldn't say versus, but working together. And I might have a comment or two down the road on that, but nothing at this point. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Commissioner Zenzinger?
Just want to give my thanks to the many people that were involved in creating the plan. I think it is excellent. It touches on all of the areas that I think are appropriate to touch on. I think it is visionary, but it is also practical. And so I like that aspect of it. One comment that I had during our briefing is that I don't want this particular plan just to be adopted and then to sit on a shelf. And one way that we can prevent that, that we can take a more active implementation role would be to make this a priority that would be cross-sectional, that would be involved in the planning of multiple departments. And so I really appreciated the aspect that you brought in, making this 15-year plan connect to the comprehensive plan. And how does it connect to the transportation mobility plan? And how does it connect to the Unified Land Code plan? If we don't find ways to make these connections, then it's just going to sit on a shelf. So I would like, I would be interested in hearing a little bit more about the coordination efforts that you've talked about between and with other departments so that this is truly a countywide plan.
Yeah. So I don't know that I have a bunch of details on the coordination efforts. I know that upper management has talked about including all of the managers in discussion about this housing crosswalk and going to a upcoming leadership meeting to say, hey, we have this crosswalk. We would like you guys to take a look at this and use this document to make sure that we can implement affordable housing strategies across the board.
Mr. Zenzinger, I can also provide a little bit of insight for you. So Heather's exactly right. Based on the feedback from the board a couple of weeks ago, we're taking the information that's been presented here and we're bringing it forward to our county manager leadership team meeting. That's within the next two weeks, I believe. And that will generate the conversation with the department directors as to how they can crosswalk, if you will, and/or identify specific goals that they can work towards that would support the implementation of this 15-year housing plan. So the conversations have just started as it relates to the rest of the organization and how they can help support moving this forward.
I really appreciate that. And the more I think about it, if we are going to activate this plan, we're going to need everybody on board, kind of an all-hands-on-deck approach because it's pretty complicated. And there are lots of facets to this. And I don't think that any one area should have the burden of trying to put this forward. One of the central tenants of this is to increase and maximize regional cooperation. I also think that that principle carries over into our organization as a county as well, that Human Services and our Housing Division has a particular eye for a certain segment of this plan. But then also our budget and finance team, you know, could help us with some of the funding sustainability approaches. I think that if we are going to think about resilient and safe housing, we have to be able to incorporate our fire plan. We have to be able to think about the types of materials that we are using and how we are zoning our new housing. If we are going to try and address our aging adults in Jefferson County, one of our fastest growing populations and a very large segment of the state that lives here in Jefferson County, we can only do that if we are incorporating those perspectives all across our different divisions. So I'm really, really encouraged by the plan. I love that we are so jazzed about bringing this collaboration and coordination as a central tenant of the plan. And I'm really excited to get started. So thank you so much.
Great. Thanks so much, Commissioner Zenzinger. Next, we'll go to public comment. We're eager to hear your thoughts on the plan and any ideas that you might have as well. So we'll move to public testimony. And we're taking public testimony both in person and virtually, those of you who are joining us this morning online, on only this issue. If you're joining us online, please use the chat function to let the host know that you would like to testify on this issue. And our host again today is Mr. Yurgert. Each person will have three minutes for your testimony. We ask that you state your name, spell your name, share your address, and the clerk will swear you in. And I think we could probably, I'm going to check with the clerk, ask everyone in person to please stand, and we'll swear you all in at the same time. And then we'll invite you to come up individually to make your comments. So please rise if you're going to provide testimony today. And I'll turn it over to our clerk.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give us is the true and the whole, excuse me, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Great. Thank you. We have, let's see, five individuals who have signed up. We will start with you. We'll start with folks who are here in person, and then we'll check to see who's joining us online. And we'll also ask those of you who didn't yet have an opportunity to sign up to speak as well. We'll begin first with Reverend Jennifer Simon, if you would please come forward. Welcome. Nice to see you. And if you would just share with us your address and spell your last name.
Sure. It's Reverend Jen Simon, S-I-M-O-N. The address is 3151 Revere Street, Aurora 80011. Good morning. I am the Assistant Minister at Jefferson Unitarian Church located in unincorporated Jeffco with a congregation of over 600 people. I'm speaking today on behalf of JUC Can, our community action network, as well as the Jeffco Chapter of Together Colorado, a statewide community organization. We're all working together to place human dignity at the center of public life. And we believe that a just and moral government values all of its citizens and ensures equitable access to our fundamental rights, including housing. First, I want to express our gratitude to the commissioners and staff for their work in making Jeffco's 15-year housing strategic plan a reality. We fully support the approval of this plan and look forward to its positive impact on our community. We strongly believe that the housing strategic plan should be integrated into our county's official planning and regulatory documents, such as the comprehensive plan and the Unified Land Use Code. By doing so, future decisions will be informed by the insightful priorities and evidence-based strategies identified by community leaders, experts, staff, and consultants that prepared the housing strategic plan. That said, the recently released draft update of the comprehensive plan falls short of adequately incorporating priorities outlined in the housing strategic plan. Furthermore, the draft comp plan does not sufficiently reflect the recommendations included with the Jeffco housing blueprint, which the commissioners endorsed last year. We ask that the staff and consultants specifically revisit the housing chapter and the land use and strategic growth chapter of the comprehensive plan with the goal of making significant changes that align the content with Jeffco's housing plans. Some of our top priorities include supporting two housing navigation centers that serve unhoused Jeffco residents, ensuring protective zoning for manufactured home communities, sometimes known as mobile homes, preserving income-restricted units, naturally occurring affordable housing, and manufactured home communities, and cultivating public-private partnerships with industries and developments coming to our county in order to achieve housing goals. By aligning our guiding documents and regulations, we can ensure that Jeffco's planning and regulatory framework is truly responsive to the future needs of our community and that it upholds the values of human dignity, fairness, and inclusivity in Jeffco's housing policies. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Reverend Simon. Before you leave the podium, can I just, would you please repeat number three? I got half of it. I think it had to do with restricted.
Yes. Preserving income-restricted units, naturally occurring affordable housing, and manufactured home communities, sometimes known as mobile homes.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Any questions, Commissioners? Great. Thank you for being here. Next, we have Jill Armstrong. And after Ms. Armstrong, we have Janice Hannan, Marshall Moore, and then Mindy Moore. Welcome. Good to see you. If you'd share your address.
Good morning. I'm Jill Armstrong. I live at 16877 West 73rd Place in Arvada, which is also an unincorporated Jefferson County. I chair the Housing Interest Group for the League of Women Voters of Jefferson County, and I'm testifying in their behalf today. First, the Jeffco League wants to thank the commissioners and the staff for all their work in the 15-year strategic housing plan. And I'd like to reinforce some of the things that were said this morning. The Jeffco League has been studying all aspects of housing in Jefferson County for over 50 years. A League housing position supports well-planned, diversified types and densities of housing with access to public transportation for all income levels. Another position supports accessible homes for families, individuals, seniors, and disabled in landscaped and regulated settings with adequate open space. We strongly believe that the housing strategic plan should be integrated into our county's official planning and regulatory documents, such as the comprehensive plan and the Unified Land Use Code. Today, I would like to highlight the needs of our older adults and disabled persons in Jefferson County. As was mentioned, senior 65 and older are the fastest-growing demographic in the county. I lost my place. So as you move forward with updating the comprehensive plan and land use code, we strongly encourage that you prioritize the expansion of aging-friendly housing options. Accessible homes for older adults need to provide ease of living with safety, security, and special accommodations, such as elevators, wide doorways, and single-floor living. These accommodations are also needed for our disabled population. The League hopes that Jeffco will be proactive and align the revised building code with the requirements and accessibility standards in Building Codes Bill that is going through the state legislature right now. That's HB 251030. Currently, much of our housing stock is not equipped to meet the needs of Jeffco's aging and disabled populations. We strongly encourage Jefferson County to focus on the creation and preservation of housing options that are dedicated to and affordable for our older adults and disabled persons. We ask that the staff and consultants specifically revisit the housing chapter and land use and strategic growth chapter of the comp plan and the Unified Land Use Code with these needs in mind. And I thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Next, we have Janice Hannan. Please come forward. And again, after Janice, we have Marshall Moore.
Good morning. My name is Janice Hannan, H-A-N-N-O-N. My address is 17190 Mountain Vernon Road. At first, I'd like to say thank you. Good morning. And thank you for reading emails. That one is from me. I've been a resident of Jefferson County for upwards of 20 years, first in Lakewood and since 2009 Golden Pleasant View. I'm on the Board of Golden United, a local nonprofit organization and a community advisory council member with Hunger Free Golden. I say this to show you how heavily invested I am in Jefferson County. In addition to being a property owner condo, I own and reside in Mountainside Estates Mobile Home Park in Pleasant View, unincorporated Jeffco. I represent the 792 mobile homeowners in unincorporated Jefferson County. There are approximately 240 homes in Mountainside Estates, corner of Ulysses and Mount Vernon. These homeowners will be directly impacted by your land use decisions. We fully support the approval of the Jeffco 15-year housing strategic plan. The 15-year plan contains a lot of valuable information about manufactured mobile home communities. Much of the input was provided by an expert with the Kokomo Mobile Home, I'm sorry, Manufactured Homeowners Association. I said that wrong. Of the 2,760 mobile homes in Jeffco, 792 of the homes are located in unincorporated areas. Manufactured homes are a vital source of affordable homeownership and contribute to Jeffco's economic, ethnic, and racial diversity. While manufactured homes are included in several strategies and action items in the 15-year plan, we are concerned that they are completely absent in the draft comprehensive plan. Worse, the revised land use map on the Together Jeffco website shows that the protective zoning for all mobile home parks currently designated as MH are being removed. Currently, my park is zoned as MH, which is a protective zoning for sole use as a mobile home park. This new plan is to classify my park as mixed residential, which offers no such protection. On page 46 of the 15-year plan, there's a strategy specifically to preserve and implement mobile home zoning for existing manufactured housing communities. I urge you to preserve mobile home zoning and incorporate it into the revised Unified Land Use Code. Mountainside Estates is on the corner of Ulysses and Mount Vernon. It's an unincorporated Jeffco, surrounded by the city of Golden and therefore not under Golden rule. This property is a developer's dream property. Without the MH protection zoning, we are.
I'm, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. Your time is up. But would you like to just conclude with a sentence or two?
I guess the short answer is, we are a mobile home park, and even though we might be considered trailer trash, I can say that since I live there. We might be considered trailer trash. Almost everybody there goes to work, comes home, feeds kids, gets up the next morning, goes to work, comes home, feeds the kids. Even though it is considered affordable housing, it's not really affordable housing. And the fact that we can't do anything about space rents being risen, I don't know if I'm explaining this very well, but that was the general gist of it. And you got my emails.
Thank you. Yes.
If you want to come back and talk to me later.
Thank you. No, we appreciate your comments very much. And I especially appreciated your comment about the importance of mobile homes also lending to the diversity of our community. That is such a critical component of this. And your point is well taken, including points we've heard from others about protecting mobile homes. So we'll continue to work on that.
Well, by preserving the affordable housing in mobile home parks, you guys are basically giving a jumpstart to what you want to do as far as affordable housing anyway, because the units are already there.
Agreed. There's much to do on that front. I agree. Thank you very much for Thank you very much for being here in person. We appreciate it. Next, we have Marshall Moore. Mr. Moore, good to see you.
My name is Marshall Moore, and I live at 717 Lookout Mountain Road in Golden, Colorado. And I'm here today to provide public comment in support of making Jeffco's 15-year Housing Strategic Plan a reality and to incorporate the priorities and recommendations provided by it into other county documents like the Together Jeffco Comprehensive Plan. And I want to start by thanking the County Commissioners, staff, task force, and other interested parties for the work that you've done in these regards and the diverse counsel you have sought during the process. I think Jeffco is a shining light on the hill despite the fact that we still have work to continue doing. I am a member of the Jeffco Advocacy Network, a group of Jefferson County residents committed to supporting solutions to our housing crisis. And I'm also the president of the Golden Young Professionals, as well as a member and convener of four other young professionals groups in Jeffco. In my daily life, I run a financial education and coaching program, so every day I see just how challenging it is for individuals and families, no matter their circumstances and goals, to stay below a housing expense ratio of 30%. And accordingly, how this housing expense puts pressures on the rest of our economy since businesses need to attract and retain a productive workforce. In my young professionals groups, I've watched as we lose talented individuals to other states with lower costs of housing and living. Since this housing is a complex problem requiring a multifaceted approach, I would like to highlight a few of the recommendations that my groups and I strongly support and want to see coordinated in the Comprehensive Plan. First of all, to continue the public-private partnerships to achieve housing goals, to establish incentives to increase the production of affordable income-restricted housing developments, support the acquisition and rehabilitation of units with expiring affordability contracts, to evaluate opportunities to preserve naturally occurring affordable housing, to improve mobile home policies and anti-displacement protections, and to build on the heading home priorities and to support navigation services. I also think we should be incorporating some of the policy recommendations from the Jeffco Housing Blueprint, including Policy Area 1, Land Use and Zoning Reform Recommendations. We need to zone more land for multifamily and to create opportunities for modular solutions and/or ADUs through local accommodations and state advocacy. And Policy Area 2, Market-Based Tools Recommendations. We need to pursue permit- or process-oriented incentives, for example, the 90-day review process, improved legislation allowing the construction of condos and townhomes, which create housing diversity and stepping stone options. And lastly, with the exciting developments in our local industries like the Quantum Commons and the Globe Parks, we will require more infrastructure and housing, and so incorporating these multifaceted solutions now is essential. I would like to thank the people of Jefferson County for your dedication to housing, and I encourage the county to adopt this plan and to incorporate it and the Jeffco Housing Blueprint into other county documents, including but not limited to the Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moore. Thanks for the work you do too at the Jeffco Advocacy Network. We appreciate it very much. Next, we have Mindy Moore. Ms. Moore, if you'd come forward and share your address, you'll have three minutes, and then we'll do a check to see if anyone else would like to testify. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Mindy Moore, M-O-H-R, different spelling, 11570 West Seventy-Third Place, Arvada. I'm a member of the Jeffco Housing Continuum Task Force, also Arvada's Housing Advisory Committee, and a member of the Jeffco Advocacy Network. I'm here to thank you for all of the comments that the Commissioners have made and as well as county staff on the need to not operate in a silo, on a need for interdepartmental work, to make the housing plan a reality and not something that sits on the shelf. But my main comment this morning is related to Commissioner Kerr's, what he alluded to about the need for regional and jurisdictional collaboration. I spend a lot of time along Highway 93, North Table Mountain, and I am scared to death about what is going to happen to that part of Jefferson County between Golden, Boulder, and in between Arvada. I see multiple stables and horse properties that the county has already allowed to be rezoned for single-family homes. I see 90 single-family homes going in on a stable adjacent to North Table Mountain. On 58th Avenue, I see more single-family homes going in, and I know this has already been approved, but this is very contradictory to what we hear is needed. We also know with the Quantum Computing Hub, the Quantum Commons, there is going to be a great need for collaboration between the cities of Golden, Arvada, Boulder, and Jefferson County. And you are in the hot seat, really, for bringing that coordination together with the regional partners I mentioned, as well as the universities in those localities, the business interests, Quantum Commons, the Governor's Office, who we begged representatives last night to please work with you, both for workforce housing. We know there's a huge need for entry-level and service industry workforce housing, as well as the transportation challenges you are going to face. If you don't want this part of Jefferson County to look like California, wildfires, gridlock, unaffordable housing, you need to work now with these partners to have not only a vision, but some real strategic goals on how everyone will work together, whether it's through a multimodal rail station that needs to be developed somewhere near Highway 72 and Highway 93 with bus service between these communities, the workforce housing that is going to be needed for these employees. We've heard up to 5,000 will be entry-level or service industry jobs. So please, the next 15 years, you need to start now. I'm begging you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore, for your comments. I think we would probably agree with that, too. Is there anyone else? And in just a moment, Mr. Yerger, I'll turn to you to see if there's anyone online. But before I do, is there anyone else in the hearing room who'd like to speak? Please come forward. Is there anyone else? If you'd like to speak, we invite you to come forward now, and then we'll go to those who are joining us online.
It's okay if I speak again. Lynn Clemens, 6202 Kilmer Loop, Unit 102, Arvada. And I highly agree with our previous speaker. That's one of the reasons why I decided to stand up here, since you heard me in the beginning, where Arvada and the county, in one small area, were not cooperating. We're not talking to one another. I actually reached out to the head of the Planning and Zoning Committee in Arvada this past week to try to get the comprehensive plans of both Arvada and the county to look together and see where they could cooperate. I agree. I think there is going to be a serious problem because we do have a lot of areas where the communities touch one another in their boundaries. I'm an example of one of them that is a serious problem. I recently, last night, was reading over the master comprehensive plan in the housing area. I am concerned about a lot of the different areas there. One of the things that I'm observing is the ULLOC, the University of Land Code, needs to reflect what's in the Comprehensive Plan. That needs to be one of the first statements in every area of ULLOC, in every one of those zones, that we are reinforcing what's in the master comprehensive plan. If this isn't stated upfront, it won't happen. I have seen this over and over in many different areas. In Arvada, that's one of the first things they do. Does, how does this development reflect the master comprehensive plan? That needs to be included upfront. Because why go through the master comprehensive plan and all of these details if the regulations are not going to reflect this? The regulations have to be there. Otherwise, we get PDs, and developers come in, and they change the regulations, and they go forward, and they put the most of, the most density they can on a piece of property. I don't think that's what we want in Arvada. I don't think that's what we want here in Jefferson County. And I am very concerned about it. One of the things in the Comprehensive Plan, it says facilitate diverse housing opportunities. Let's make sure we have those diverse opportunities. Young people, do they want to live in the most dense housing complexes that they, that a developer can put in? I don't think so. We don't need the most dense in each different residential housing zone. And that's one of the things in the, in the Comprehensive Plan that is stated, and I think that should be taken out. We don't need the most density. We can put the density in. If it, if it figures into the community, great. But let's be realistic about this and create a really nice community all over the county and the cities. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ms. Clemens. Next, I'm going to ask Mr. Yerger. Do we have anyone online who'd like to address the Board at this time?
No one online.
Great. Thank you so much. And thanks to members of our community who shared your comments and feedback with us. I know we'll have some closing comments in just a moment, but let me turn it back over to Commissioner Zenzinger and Commissioner Kerr to see if there are any comments you'd like to make at this time, or if you have any follow-up questions. Commissioner Kerr?
No questions. Just really want to thank everyone for coming in. And for folks listening online, you might not be able to see the wonderful sight we have of so many folks who came in to express their opinions, perhaps not by coming up to the podium, but by wearing their Together Colorado shirts and supporting, very, very quietly but expressively supporting their support for some of our speakers and for the overall plan that we're looking at. Again, I'm just overwhelmed by the community support, the coming together from municipalities throughout Jefferson County, our various community organizations, our departments here in Jefferson County, to come together here and really make this, this happen. Slightly tangential issue and article in the newspaper, there is a particular quote by an elected official who said that in his town of Arvada, just homelessness wasn't something that they needed to deal with. And that should be just the county dealing with that. And I think all of you here are just underscoring the fact that this is a community coming together. We talk about the spectrum from homelessness to market rate and getting people on that continuum and helping them move along that continuum. It takes a village, whether your village is Arvada or your village is Jefferson County, it takes all of us, our villages, working together. So I just really wanted to underscore that and make sure that you all know that as I do a vehement "I" vote on this, and Senator Boyd out there knows why the two senators up here vote "I." Senator Boyd gets it, having served in both the House and the Senate. She knows exactly what we're doing when we, when we do that. So with that, just thank you all for being here.
I still remain the rogue yes, but we're all on the same page. Commissioner Zenzinger.
So I wasn't going to speak, and then I thought, no, I will, and then I said I won't, and I will. I just, I would like to underscore some particular elements of this 15-year plan. And then also, just to dovetail off of the comments that were made by Commissioner Kerr, we are entering into a new wave of thinking. So, you know, 15, 20 years ago, it was revolutionary to plan for transportation and land use. It was like, you know, you know, blew people's minds that we would do that. We have now entered into a new era of understanding affordable housing and land use planning and transportation planning and fire planning. It really has come to the point where we recognize the value of integrating all of these different areas to make it common practice. And I think that we have been doing that, but this, this plan makes it much more intentional for the first time in our official documents. And so I really resonated with the comments that were made here today about making sure that this is reflected in our Comprehensive Plan. When I was working at the state level, I actually worked on a bill called Senate Bill 174. This was on sustainable affordable housing. And what it did is it mandated, it was a mandate, that communities, municipalities, and regions throughout Colorado integrate affordable housing into their planning. Now, I want to point out, however, that it is not a mandate to do it a specific way. We still have the ability to customize our plans to fit the needs of our community, and I want to applaud the people who came here today to elevate that. Thank you for bringing those concerns, bringing those areas in particular of our local needs to the table. We don't need a one-size-fits-all from the state telling us how to do it, but what we do need are you, the people in this room, coming forward and saying what you need as one of our community members. So I just wanted to, once again, thank you for being here and for doing such a good job of helping us stay true to our Jeffco vision.
Great. Thanks, Commissioner Zenzinger. Couple of quick thoughts to share as well, and I think one of our biggest challenges is your Board of County Commissioners, is listening and finding common ground. Because everyone across our community may have a different perspective on what their community should look like, how it should develop, how it should grow. But there is one through line, and that is the issue of affordable housing. When I go to the Evergreen Chamber, or just last week went to the Conifer Area Town Hall, I hear from business leaders who say it is very challenging for us to recruit and retain employees because of the high cost of housing. I talk to family members who talk about their young adult children graduating from college who want to come back home but can't afford to live in the very communities in which they grew up and their parents and families helped to support and are an integral part of. I speak to people who are elderly, who want to stay in their community, but really have no place to go in terms of downsizing. These are all challenges, and there are so many others, which I think you lifted up this morning, which we're incredibly grateful for. But if there's one thing I know about Jeffco, and I'm going to come back to this issue of collaboration, it's that we, we do focus on partnership, and that has been a core component of the work that we have done on the Housing Advocacy Committee, where you have mayors, including the mayor of Arvada and other surrounding cities. Wheat Ridge Mayor Starker is on that task force. We have legislators. We had then-Senator Zenzinger, now Commissioner Zenzinger on that task force as well. And it's also important to bring developers to the table, housing experts, and our community leaders as well, to really think through these tensions that come forward when we talk about affordable housing. What is the best way for communities to grow? How do we ensure the health and well-being of our communities and that everyone, everyone, no matter what your economic, socioeconomic background is, thrives in Jefferson County? That is a top priority. I, I think I can speak on behalf of all three of us that we wish to see. The, there are some other components here, too, that I think we're going to need to dig deeper into, and that is, how do we fund this? As we think about housing affordability and we hear about that 3% that we'd like to set aside, I think there are probably many of us who would like to see a larger percentage of affordable housing set aside. So how do we realize that vision together? The other piece is the capacity of getting this work done. Absolutely no question, integrating it into our Comprehensive Master Plan, our Land Use Code, transportation and more is critical. But how do we also think about not only wildfire, but also water availability, compatibility, retail, walking, transportation routes, and more? It's very exciting, and at the same time, it can feel rather daunting, but I feel that we are a community that can get this work done and make sure that this is a document that stays in practice and doesn't collect dust on a shelf. The other thing is, I just want to underscore some, emphasize some of the areas that you shared with us. I think this is a transformational, bold plan that you have brought before us and very proud to support it. And as we've heard from our community, we have more work to do regarding integrating it into the CM, into the Comprehensive Master Plan, into land use codes. We've heard your concerns about protection for mobile home zoning as well. You talked about the two housing navigation centers. We have allocated, as a Board of County Commissioners, and this has not changed, $3 million for Lakewood and $3 million for Arvada for navigation centers. And we're working with both of those cities to continue that work and that planning. So please, please know that as well. And then finally, absolutely cultivating public-private partnerships. A lot of that work is underway, and we will continue to focus on it moving forward. A lot of that work is underway, and we will continue to focus on it moving forward. Just a huge round of thank you and much gratitude to all of you for being here, those of you who worked on the plan, those of you from our community, and individuals who are part of our county team, like Kat Douglas, who works on this effort day in and day out. We really appreciate you and your team very much. So with that, I think we should move forward with a motion. Let's let's vote on this issue. May I have a motion for hearing, regular agenda, item 10.2?
I move for the approval of hearing, regular agenda, item 10.2.
Second, Ms. Zamora, will you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahl Kemper?
Yes. And with that, motion 10.2 is approved by the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Thanks again for being here. We're now going to move forward with our next round of public comment. Is there anyone in the hearing room who would like to provide public comment to the board at this time? Mr. Yerger, is there anyone online who would like to address the board?
No one online.
Okay, great. Then we will close this portion of public comment. And next up, we have reports from commissioners. I will start with Commissioner Zenzinger. Do you have any reports?
I do. Let me open up my notes here real quick. First, I wanted to thank the human services team in particular for helping to welcome the Japanese delegation that we had. I had the great honor of being able to welcome a group of folks from Japan who were visiting our state and in particular, visiting Jefferson County to learn more about the way that we do human services works and in particular, child welfare. So it was a fabulous group, the team. The report that we heard from the Japanese delegation is that it was overwhelmingly successful, and they were just so grateful for our hospitality and the level of expertise that was shared during that moment of country collaboration. And I just wanted to also elevate how much work went into planning and hosting that event. So I wanted to thank our human services team and in particular, our child welfare team. Secondly, I also had an opportunity to meet with the Westminster Chamber. And I was, I did my first podcast ever in my life with the Westminster Chamber. We are hoping to make this a monthly event where I will engage with the Westminster Chamber and the Westminster Business Community. We don't have a regular time set yet, but we are looking to do it on a monthly basis. And you can find those podcasts on the Westminster Chamber's website, and they record them all on Facebook, so you can find them there as well. I also really enjoyed my time. I had an opportunity to participate in the Jeffco EDC Board of Governors meeting and the Board of Directors meeting. And in particular, the Board of Directors meeting was hosted at the new Google Fiber building, which is located in Lakewood. And it was really interesting to hear from the perspective of that blossoming company and how they are working to set down fiber all throughout Jefferson County. And I wanted to thank them for their hospitality and an opportunity to serve on that board in official capacity. And then lastly, I had an opportunity to attend Dr. Cog this month. And it was a little bit of a homecoming. Many of the people that I worked with back when I served on Dr. Cog as a city counselor were still there, and it was really exciting. We took a number of positions on some bills, and we also heard a really good presentation from the Regional Air Quality Council around our area and our non-attainment for for our air quality goals and how Dr. Cog's work currently is in alignment to try and meet the goals so that we can get into compliance with our non-attainment areas. And then lastly, I just wanted to share that it was a real pleasure to hear from one of the public members that came forward and testified at that Dr. Cog meeting. Many of you probably know him. His name is Randall Loeb. But he did a really good job of reminding the elected officials in the room that we have an obligation to think about our entire community, not just the people within our sphere. And it was, it was a really good reminder in particular to think about those that are experiencing homelessness and who are on the margins of our society.
Thanks so much, Commissioner Zenzinger. Commissioner Kerr?
Great, thank you. First of all, I want to thank our county manager, Joe Kirby, his staff and all the employees who took part in our employee town hall right here in this room earlier last week. And I'm sure he'll have some more on that. Also attended the the two Jeffco EDC events, as mentioned by Commissioner Zenzinger. And the one, the Board of Governors one, we did at the Beck Venture Center. So it was really great getting out on these Jeffco EDC events. And the Beck Venture Center is part of the School of Mines, and it's it's really an innovation center where entrepreneurs and folks who want to start up a business can come in and get get support. So it's exciting to be there and see what's happening there. Went to the West Colfax Civic Association last week. Among the other reports, Mayor Strom, from the mayor of Lakewood, talked about the uncertainty around the Federal Center, which is the second-largest center of federal employees in the United States after Washington, D.C. And not every federal employee that works at the Federal Center or the surrounding areas all live in Lakewood, but many of them do. Growing up in Lakewood, I had many neighbors who worked at the Federal Center, and many still do, but throughout Jefferson County as well. And the uncertainty around so many federal employees who are at risk of losing their jobs or being demoted. And that's certainly, it could be a huge, huge impact for our economy, how we're able to provide services and people who might need to have services provided. So that's certainly something we're all thinking about. I attended my first full Mile High Flood District Board meeting where we approve multiple projects throughout the metro area, some here in Jefferson County, but also we, it's truly a regional approach, making sure that all of the counties and municipalities throughout the metro area are working together on flood control. Went to the Conservation Colorado Legislative Reception. A lot of, a lot of folks there, a lot of important work, certainly around conservation, climate issues. But also, one of the things that I think a lot of people kind of don't think about is we're talking about public lands and our national parks and national forests. In addition to conservation issues, is that Colorado has a huge, very important outdoor recreation industry. And the vast majority of the people involved in the industry and who recreate in our outdoors are extremely concerned about conservation, but they also like a good economy. And our outdoor recreation industry is a huge part of that. And so those conservation and the outdoor recreation industries certainly go go hand in hand. On Thursday, I'm going to take part in the Courts in Community at Green Mountain High School, my alma mater. I think we'll have some more details about that in just a moment. And then we also have the Applewood Business Awards coming up Thursday evening. That's all for me.
Great, thanks so much, Commissioner Kerr. Lots to report to you this morning, lots going on, including the start of the legislative session, which began last month. And so you'll have your county commissioners testifying before legislative committees on bills that affect Jefferson County or have a regional impact. Last week, I testified on two bills related to wildfire. Of course, we watch that issue closely as a county that has major risk related to wildfire. Also on that note, the Jefferson County Wildfire Commission met last week to talk about our priorities for the next couple of years. Those priorities will also come before the Board of County Commissioners. One of the issues that came up, also an issue we heard when we talked about housing, is sustainable funding. And again, thanks to Jeffco voters for approving 1A as a portion of those dollars will go toward wildfire resiliency in our community. We want to thank all of our commission members for a robust, in-depth and engaged conversation on how we keep our community safe, how we improve forest health, and how we educate community members, especially those who are new to Jefferson County and may not be aware of the wildfire risk we face. Also, Jeffco EDC Board Meeting attended that as well, albeit online because the testimony was going on at the same time. And also wanted to mention the Employee Town Hall as well. Thank you to our Jeffco team members who were engaged. I was incredibly impressed at the number of questions that our county manager, our Public Affairs Director, and other members of our team were able to move through. I think almost a dozen questions were responded to. We still didn't have enough time to get through all of them. And a lot of those questions focused on the impact of federal funding and what that might mean, the loss of that funding for Jeffco, which is a significant portion in terms of serving our our community in a whole host of areas. I will see you at Courts in the Community at Green Mountain High School. And also wanted to share, speaking of podcasts, that Jefferson County just launched its very first podcast series. It's a great podcast, Jeffco 101. I had a chance to listen to it over the weekend. So big shout out to our Public Affairs team for their wonderful work on launching the podcast. And you can find that at jeffco.us. Couple of places I was in the community, especially over the weekend, more than two. This is extraordinary to my mind, but not surprising because we are Jeffco. More than 250 community members showed up on Saturday at the new South Jeffco Library location and gave their input on what they would like to see on their neck in terms of their next new library in South Jeffco, ranging from an outdoor learning space to a coffee cafe and much more. So thanks to all of our community members who turned out. I also want to give a shout out to the Conifer Rotary. The Rotary hosted Mindfest 2025. This is their second annual community event that focuses on mental health, resources, health and well-being activities, classes, and so much more. Jefferson Center for Mental Health was there, as well as Mountain Resource Center and other community partners. Again, an excellent example of an issue we talked about earlier around collaboration and partnership. And it was also wonderful to provide a county update at the Conifer Area Town Hall on wildfire resiliency, proposed development projects. We heard from Heather Gutherless and more. So thanks to the Conifer Area Council for the work that they do on that front. And that is it for me. County Manager Joe Kirby?
Good morning, Commissioners. I have four just brief items to update you on. First, as you're aware, you mentioned 1A earlier, Commissioner Dahl Kemper, and the voters supporting that at the ballot box back in November. We've been working with the board over the last month or so planning for the implementation of 1A. And today is our first internal implementation steering committee team meeting. We're kicking that off late this afternoon. So we have a strong group of folks internal to the organization that will help drive our internal processes as it relates to implementing 1A. Also, just a shout out to Porchlight. Later this week, on Thursday night, I believe it is, they're having an open house from 5:00 to 7:00 to celebrate their four-year anniversary. And they provide lots of great services within Jefferson County, serving as our local family justice center. Also, kudos to our Roden Bridge staff regarding their work on the storm late last week. And they continue to do an outstanding job considering the shortage of drivers, snowplow drivers that we have. So kudos to them. Also, relative to the Employee Town Hall, thank you for acknowledging that. That credit goes to Cassie and her team. And we, as we did last year, plan on doing those quarterly this year. So we'll look forward to the next one. And that's all I have for this morning.
I was just texting Sarah to see if she could get us more information about the Porchlight Open House for the Board of County Commissioners. So thank you, Joe, for mentioning that. Really appreciate that and agree completely. Huge shout out to Roden Bridge. They were just working around the clock to make sure people were safe and those roads were clear, and we appreciate them very much. County Attorney Kim Sorrels?
I have a couple of updates for today. Wanted to just share with people about the Courts in the Community program for those of you, those of you who may not be aware what that is that will be attending on Thursday. The Colorado Judiciary works with high schools across the state. And I believe it's quarterly, either the Supreme Court or a panel of the Court of Appeals will go into a high school. And what they do in advance is they they provide the high school students with two different cases, one civil and one criminal. And they provide them the opening brief that's filed by the party who's appealing the underlying decision. There's a response brief by the party who is defending the underlying decision. And then there's a reply by the original party. So that's the briefing that the court uses to make its decision after hearing oral argument. And so the students have that. So then they get to watch the live oral argument that would normally occur downtown at the Rothbard Judicial Building downtown across from the Capitol. But instead, the real arguments are happening in these high schools. So the kids get to see how it plays out. And the judges will not issue an opinion or talk about the case after the arguments are done, just as they would in downtown. But they will then take questions from the students just about process and things like that after it's over. So it's a really interesting event. They they get to ask questions of the attorneys. I'm sorry, not of the judges. And so it's it's a really cool process. And our office has actually participated in a couple arguing cases in front of the Supreme Court and the Court of Appeals in different ones. There are cases this week, but it will be interesting to watch. And then my second update is I got to testify last week in favor of a, the Cora Bill, Senate Bill, I believe it's 077, that's being run by Senator Kip. And one thing I want to note and thank her for is all of the stakeholding that she has done. Every single person who testified, whether they were for or against it, acknowledged the stakeholding, stakeholding process that she's done to make sure that everyone's voices are heard. And I think both sides agree that this is a pretty balanced bill in terms of what it does for our benefit as a local government. It gives us a little bit of additional time to respond to the Cora request because the numbers have gone up dramatically. Just to give you a small flavor, in 2019, when I joined, we got 217 Cora requests for the entire year. Last year, we processed 650 Cora requests. And so that was an increase of about 199% just between 2019 and 2024. And to date, when I pulled these numbers a week or so ago for January and February, we had already responded to 80 Cora requests. And that does not include the clerk and recorder. That does not include the criminal justice requests that go to the sheriff. So we have been very actively responding. And, you know, we fully agree that our citizens who are active and want to know what's going on are entitled to that. We just need a little more breathing room to be able to respond. So we are appreciative of Senator Kip for doing that.
Thanks so much. And we want to thank all of you for being with us this morning. We're going to go ahead and adjourn our hearing. We will continue on the fifth floor in 15 minutes. Again, we'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll begin our briefings at 11:05 on the fifth floor. Thanks again, everyone.